Okay. Six o'clock and the Beaver Creek Planning Commission will have its regular meeting here. The first item is, of course, a call to order, then roll call.
Ms.
Do I have a motion to excuse Ms. Akers and Mr. Self?
Let me do roll call real quick and then you can do your, to excuse them. I'll make call roll real quick.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Akers is absent. Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self is absent.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion to excuse Ms. Akers and Mr. Self?
Motion to excuse? I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item is the approval of the agenda. If everybody's in consensus, we'll accept the agenda as it's stated. Any issues?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the agenda.
All right.
Second?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Then we need a motion for the minutes. Approval of the minutes of January the 3rd, 2018.
Motion to approve the minutes from January 3rd, 2018.
All right, second?
Second motion?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. All right. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is PUD 08-1. It's an amendment 118 YGIG. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the legal advertisement?
This is case number PUD 08-1. It's an amendment of 1 of 18 on an application filed by Hitten Patel, 1032 Deer Creek Drive, Fairborn, Ohio, 45324. The applicant requests approval of an amendment to add an additional 3.002 acres of land to PUD 08-1. The property is located on the west side of Glenbrook Drive and north of Crestmont Court. The property is further described as Book 4, Page 4, Partial 29 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to have the applicant, please, come forward and give a presentation to the commission. Please state your name and address for the record, please. We give, well, I'm sorry, go right ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
My name is Ron Kozar. I am counsel for the applicant.
All right, sir.
Who is standing beside me.
Okay.
How you doing? How are yous?
Hitten Patel is the applicant.
All right, sir.
And there is, there was a slight misstatement which I'd like to correct.
All right.
YGIC is the name of the property owner. Youth Group for Indian Culture.
All right.
The property at issue is adjacent to the Hindu temple.
Right.
That you've perhaps all seen that's visible from North Fairfield as one approaches the mall. And the proposal basically is to enable the development of the adjacent parcel as a school to, for Indian youth who attend the Hindu temple. Mr. Patel can tell you more about what lies in store and can answer whatever questions might emerge. Also in the audience available to be sworn in and answer questions is Ven Swaminathan, who is also an instrumental part of the team that's developing the property.
All right, very good.
I will, I will just give the floor then to Hitten Patel if there's something he'd like to add.
Now, to be honest, I think you pretty much explained it very nicely, briefly. It's basically project to, as you said, support the community with community events and Sunday school type of deal, religious classes. And it only occurs like once a week on a Sunday from around 10:00 to 11:30 or so. And then whatever else the, you know, place will be instrumental for the youth group, for the Indian community. So, that's pretty much it.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Shall we take our seats then?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have the staff give a presentation on this particular project.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 08-1. It is, again, the Youth Group for Indian Culture, the YGIC. And again, they're looking to do a PUD amendment to add three acres onto an existing, there's an existing eight-acre PUD, again, to construct a religious education center. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek, southeast of the intersection of Pentagon and New Jersey Trebine with North Fairfield Road. Seen here is a closer aerial photo of the three acres. They have about 135 feet of frontage on Lillian Lane. And it's kind of hard to tell from the aerial photo, but there is a six-foot mound that surrounds the property. There's a cut-in on that six-foot mound about this location for future access off of Lillian Lane. But again, this six-foot mound was constructed, it's a good visual and, you know, physical buffer between anything that should occur on this property and the condo properties to the south. There is condos throughout the area, to the south and into the east, southeast. This property is actually was part of, is part of, currently part of the zoning for those condos. So, should this rezoning go through, you know, this would be the last vacant portion of that condo development that would go, obviously, non-residential. To the north is, the Hindu temple is, that this location, and then about 2008, 2009 area, you know, a portion of the property was rezoned, actually, the whole PUD was created so that they can create this pooja hall, which is a social hall that's physically connected to the existing Hindu temple. So their intent here would be to rezone this three acres and most likely have an internal connection as well as an external connection to the site. Let's see here. The property is located in a office. You can see it's on our land use plan, it's located with an office designation. And so what they're proposing, and what this amendment's proposing, there's a list of conditions, O1 uses that are allowed within PUD 08-1. And we're proposing just to extend those uses and setbacks down to this additional three acres. But what they're, what those uses are, modified list of O1 uses, and because of that, you know, is compatible with what the land use plan has for this three acres. Again, you can see the, this yellow area is the three acres that they're proposing to add to the PUD, and this blue boundary here is the existing PUD boundary. One of the, one of the things that is highlighted in the current ordinances that establish PUD 08-1, and I just wanted to, I mean, they're in the text, it is there, but I just wanted to make it clear, so I added an exhibit to your proposed resolution for your consideration this evening about what were the 40-foot building setbacks along the eastern property line as well as along the western property line and here along Lillian Lane. And then also a 50-foot buffer along the southern boundary. I mean, that has the six-foot mound anyway, so, I mean, there's not much they can do with that. But because the buffer is proposed to be added, there's nothing they can do with that other than landscaping, you know, adding some evergreen trees or something like that on the mound. But no sidewalks, no parking lot, no building, no nothing on that 50-foot buffer. And there's already a 50-foot buffer along the northern property line of the existing PUD, so I'll just maintain that with this exhibit. Again, they're proposing to bring over the conditions, or the, yeah, the conditions and uses allowed in the current PUD. And again, that's a modified list of O1 uses. Ordinance 08-12 is in your packet for you to look through. But among those uses, medical clinics, nursery, daycare, many different office uses, you would find in the O1 banquet halls and places of religious assembly. So, again, anything that they're proposing to do here would be, is included in that proposed conditions, list of allowed uses. And just to point out, you know, this is a PUD amendment. It's a legislative action, so you'd be making a recommendation to City Council. And then City Council will hear the case based on your recommendation. And that is a legislative action. Now, before they would be allowed to put any building out there, any parking lot, anything like that, they would have to go through a second stage of the PUD. So that's when we would look at the specific site plan, architectural elevations, landscaping, lighting, and things like that. So, again, this is the first stage. And staff is recommending approval of this applicant's request. There are two conditions in the resolution for your consideration, but one of the conditions extends the use of the original ordinances and the 2009 amendment. But again, we recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Randy. Appreciate that. At this point in the hearing, we'll have public input. I'd like to remind those that come forward to give testimony, you have a limit of three minutes. But if somebody else is going to testify and wants to surrender their minutes to the individual, then that person can talk for a couple of more minutes. So, this time, if there's anybody who would care to testify on this particular project, you're welcome to come forward, give your name and address, please, so that we can have that for the record. Okay, I guess, no public input. At this time, then, we'll actually close that public portion of public input, and we'll open it up for my fellow commissioners here who may have questions for the applicant. So, proceed ahead.
I don't have any further questions, what, other than what's in the packet? Questions?
Just had one question for Mr. Burkett. So, on the, the PUD as it's written, the way it's, we're treating it as an O1 district, correct?
Well, it's, it would be PUD 08-1, but the O1 portion is just the uses.
Okay.
There's a list in the 2008 ordinance of the proposed, or the allowed uses that are currently in the eight-acre PUD.
So even though it's a school, does that, it still counts as a place of religious assembly? I mean, I just was kind of unclear, it seemed a little gray to me since it was being proffered as a school, but...
Yeah, I mean, places of religious assembly are allowed.
It's like parochial schools, for example, right?
Yeah. And so is assembly halls and schools, nursery schools. And so what they're proposing is kind of a, it's a hybrid use between place of religious assembly and a school.
Okay.
I mean, it's an educational facility associated with a place of religious, so we don't have a specific use that says schools and associated with assembly, or with a...
Gotcha, okay. That was, that was my only question.
So, but I, yeah, I think that we're covered, what they're proposing.
Okay, that was my only question. I just was unclear on the language on there.
Sure.
Like what a school was, because I didn't see a private school or a parochial school designation anywhere in the zoning codes.
Right. This is more of a Sunday school.
Gotcha, sure. Thank you. That was, that was my only question, thank you.
Only question? Any others?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
The chair will call for a motion on approval of this particular modification.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve PUD 08-1, amend 118. With the attached two conditions.
With the attached two conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. And best wishes as you move on through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item that we have is a, let's see. I'll have the clerk read it. That would be a little better.
This is case number PUD 91-2, mod 12 of 17, on an application filed by BSM Development LLC, 3011 Armory Drive, Suite 120, Nashville, Tennessee, 37204. The application requests a major modification for 0.872 acres of land to allow for the construction of a multi-tenant retail building located on the east side of North Fairfield Road and north of the KFC Long John Silver's Restaurant, further described as Book 4, Page 6, Parcel 67 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant here, please? If you'd give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. My name is Jeff Tibbits. I'm with CESO. We're actually the, address is 2800 Corporate Exchange Drive, Columbus, Ohio. We are actually the civil engineers and architects for the project on behalf of Baker Story McDonald or BSM Development. BSM is a developer out of Nashville and has been quite active here in Beaver Creek over the last few years, in fact, with the Aldi development just down the street from here, as well as the Sleep Outfitters, and most recently, the redevelopment of the Logan's Restaurant out a little closer towards 675. So this has been a favorite location of theirs to continue their, their development activity. So, this, this particular site is located in a, the remote locate, or the remote parking of the existing Target parcel out along Fairfield Road adjacent to the KFC. It's about .87 acres in total. And the proposal for the, for the PUD modification is to construct a approximately 6,800 square-foot multi-tenant building, which would be a mix of restaurant and retail and, and associated improvements with the parking lot and parking area in order to allow that to be constructed there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions following staff, staff reports.
All right. Thank you very much, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll have staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Before you's an application requesting approval of a major modification, should you choose to approve it tonight, it would allow for the construction of an approximately 6,800 square-foot three-tenant building to be located next to the KFC restaurant within the shops at Fairfield Commons. So, a specific site plan was approved for the 31.3 acres total in 1996. At that time, there were three outlots that were proposed for a total of 40,000 square feet. At this time, we have five outlots. This would be the sixth. So it has changed in that 20 years, 22 years. And, but they are still, with this proposal, they would be at 33,500 square feet. So still approximately 6,500 square feet below what was originally approved. But since there have been so many changes to the parking and the circulation and the number of buildings, as well as not having any specific architectural guidelines to go by within this PUD, it was decided that it would need to go through a major modification process. So it'll have to come through you guys for recommendation and then to City Council for final approval. So as the applicant stated, BSM has been working with us on several properties for the past few years, and they've gotten pretty used to what, what we expect, what Planning Commission expects as far as the architecture of their buildings goes. It's pretty consistent with a lot of what they've done here already, and it's, it's also consistent with, with what can be found in the, in the PUD now. It's primarily brick with some ephes, and then the glass storefronts. We've added conditions that the downspouts be internally mounted, that the rooftop units be fully screened. If you're driving down Fairfield and you see the KFC, you can see that it sits significantly lower than North Fairfield Road. So we want to make sure that none of that mechanical equipment is going to be visible from Fairfield as, as anyone is driving by there. As far as parking goes, obviously, we're always looking at parking, that's one of our biggest concerns. With this Target outlot, as you know, the Target has a really large parking field that's rarely fully used. I think the applicant stated that the restaurant, that the entire building wouldn't contain more than 4,200 square feet of restaurant and the remainder would be retail. So using that 15% reduction for any of the spaces that wouldn't be used by customers and, or employees, it would be required a total of 45 spaces plus one space for each restaurant employee. And since we don't have the restaurant employees actually set yet, they're proposing 51 spaces. So if you're thinking maybe 10 to 15 employees, they might be four or five short, but with the parking across, across the way, and you can see, we did add a crosswalk to be able to access that parking, they're going to have more than enough parking. And, and it helps to break up a parcel that you can see is, is never used, a parking lot that even during the Christmas busy time, it seldom gets full. So, also, within the subdivision, there are cross-parking, across-access easements. You're going to see the subdivision again for this lot later tonight, and we'll talk about that more. As far as landscaping and screening goes, they are proposing to take out the existing landscape islands, but they will be replacing those, refreshing the parking lot. There's also going to be a retaining wall that will need to be put in along North Fairfield because of that grade difference. So we did add a condition of approval that would require that the planning, the planning department, the engineering department review those details on that retaining wall before it gets approved. We want to make sure that it matches the retaining walls that we've done, kind of along Chick-fil-A and Abuelos in that area, and make sure that it's consistent in color and, and style as well. As far as the lighting goes, everything out there is pretty much the same. They're adding a couple of new light pole, light posts. We did add a condition that the light posts match, obviously, the adjacent development. And then the signage, they didn't add any proposed signage, but the original PUD from 1993 does have sign requirements. And we did add a condition that if they do decide to put up a ground sign, that it be consistent with the other developments, especially the new ones like Primanti and Sleep Outfitters, and that it be no taller than, than the four feet and have to break up the sides to match the rest of the development. Staff is recommending approval of this with 15 conditions in the attached resolution. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. At this point, we'll have public input. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak, you have three minutes to speak, and if you'd like to have additional time, why, perhaps another person would surrender a minute. But I don't see anybody in the audience tonight, I have clerk, so we'll close the public input portion of the meeting. And I'll open it up for my fellow commissioners to ask questions of the applicant.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have no questions at this time.
I have one question for staff. So on the north side of the access road up top there, there's currently a stop sign coming south?
Yes, right here. And, yeah, both directions.
Okay.
If you're coming south, you have to stop. If you're going north, you have to stop.
On the other side of the property?
Yes.
So I'm just concerned, I've been there myself, and there's nothing stopping anybody going in and out of Target right there?
Mm-hmm.
And it gets rather confusing. Have you, do you have any concern with more traffic flowing towards the west there with only having one stop sign in that little vicinity?
I guess...
And I only mention that because right now, nobody really uses the parking lot, so it's not a concern.
Right. I mean, I don't anticipate it being that, that big of an issue. I feel like the traffic is pretty consistent through there anyway, pretty much all day long, and having a few more cars, you know, turning into the development or turning out of it, I don't anticipate causing really more issues. I don't know if maybe there needs to be a stop bar here, because I think a lot of the confusion sometimes is the people here don't realize that these people are stopping.
Right.
So then they stop, and they stop, and so maybe we need to take a look at, at this with Target and try to figure something out to, to maybe fix that. I think that's probably more of an issue, I feel like, than, than this. And I, and that's going to have to be something that we talk to Target about because it'll, it's going to stay on, on their side of it. But I think that's something that we can work on.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you.
Any further questions from members?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Well, at this point, then, I'll ask for a motion on this particular resolution.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve PUD 91-2, mod 12 of 17, major mod, with the Nobody's going to help me out, are they?
15.
With the attached 15 conditions.
Okay. Is there a second, please?
I second.
Would you call the roll, clerk, please?
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, and best wishes to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And your project. The next item on our agenda is subdivisions. We have the first one that we have tonight. Oh, you just, Randy handled it. Okay, very good. All right. Staff will make a presentation on the first of two that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you is S18-1. It is a replat request for approximately 18.71 acres, and what the applicant's looking to do is add that 17.8, or 18.71 acres to a 17.7 acre currently platted lot. If Planning Commission, as Planning Commission may be aware, Traditions of Beaver Creek has developed over the last 10 year, or, I'm sorry, the last five years as a, two type of, or multi-type of facility. One is an 80,000 square foot assisted living center, and then behind that, there was three independent living buildings built, each with four units in them. And those were very successful. They were actually leased out before they were ever built, so the applicant wanted to do a phase two. And so, last year, they came through and got approval of a specific site plan for an additional amount of buildings in this area. And then phase three will be some additional of these independent living units in this area. And then one of the conditions of that approval was that they add that 17.7 acres into the existing subdivision and get it platted. So that's why they're here this evening, is in fact, to get that platted. So what this will do is create a two-lot subdivision. And seen here are the two lots. One is Lot 1A, which would be 17.5 acres, and one, because of the situation, the location of the proposed buildings, we didn't want to have a property line going right through the center or down, splitting a building up. So they adjusted the, what is a 90-degree angle now, they adjusted that property line around, and that's, that's why Lot 1A will be a little bit smaller than it currently is, and Lot 2A would be a little bit bigger. So again, they're proposing to create a two-lot subdivision. We routed this out to various agencies. A few comments were given, mostly on the, the technical side of how the doc, the legal side of how the document is written and how to be recorded. But the applicant has responded to those. Staff's recommending approval. There are three conditions in the staff report. You can see how the, it'll be laid out in terms of the existing facility, and then this, the new property line. As you can see, the, the existing property line goes way to the north, and the new property line will go across here. So if staff, again, does recommend approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. We'll open it now for questions from fellow commissioners, or comments.
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I have no questions.
All right. I'll call for a motion on this first one here.
I motion to approve case number S18-1 with the three recommendations, conditions.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes. Okay. We have the second subdivision tonight. Madam Clerk, you want to read, or that's just staff presentation? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you's an application requesting a replat of the existing shops at Fairfield Commons subdivision that would allow for the creation of one additional lot adjacent to the KFC restaurant. So as we were previously discussing.
Right.
This lot is going to be created for the BSM multi-tenant building property. So right now, we have, oops. Right now, it's, the entire Target property is one lot, with the exception of the KFC, it's its own separate lot. And what the applicant is proposing is to create a second lot, which would be .8717 acres and would leave the original Target, Lot 1A, as 10.9482 acres. The, all the area agencies took a look at, at the plat, reviewed it, all recommended approval or approval with conditions, and staff is also recommending approval with the three conditions in the attached staff report.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Again, questions from members of the commission or comments?
No questions.
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair?
All right.
Well, we'll call for a motion. Motion to approve case number S18-2 with the three conditions.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Curran?
Yes. Okay, no further items are on the agenda tonight, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.